So everyone, I want to remind you that we are live captioning our meetings. So please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning if that's your interest. So at this time, it's 4:31 PM. I call to order the work session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of September 13, 2022. For the record, I will call roll call vote of board members and I'll start with Ms. Bittersmith.
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norini?
Present.
Thank you. We know Ms. Smith is in Rwanda. Is she present with us this evening? Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen?
Present.
Thank you. With my presence, Marie Sullivan. Right now, there's six board members in attendance, one absent. And I'd like to know, is Mr. Burnett with us this afternoon, our student trustee? Okay, we'll move on that. So with that again, reminder, six board members are present, one is absent. So today, we are going to be provided a report regarding the 2023 state legislative agenda and 2023 federal policy and budgetary agenda. Dr. Gonzalez, would you like to introduce our presenters for this afternoon's work session?
Yes, President Sullivan, members of the board, CEC and guests that are with us this afternoon. A good afternoon to everybody. And again, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you to share work that has been going on since we finished our last legislative session and spent some time this summer developing what you're about to see. And we had promised to bring this to you earlier, which we are doing, and hopefully get this approved with your feedback that we expect to receive today and begin this work as soon as possible. It's critically important that we begin to work with our elected officials as quickly as possible on scenes and movement in this agenda. So with that, I will turn it over to Darcy Renfro, our Vice Chancellor of Community Government Relations and Economic Development. He will be joined by Alexis Sustor for our Government Relations Director. Take it away, Darcy.
Thank you, Chancellor. President Sullivan, members of the board and CEC. Thank you for the opportunity. As the Chancellor indicated, we're going to walk through tonight really what are 13 state recommendations or positions and nine federal positions. These positions, as a reminder, help us frame the conversations and how to react to individual bills as they're moving through the legislature as session moves forward. In this early, with this early conversation, potential adoption of our agenda, it also helps us set our positions out to the public and our supporters who have similar agendas and making sure that they're aligned. So we have, in fact, others pulling alongside us as we did last year with the successful session in getting STEM funds permanently restored. The changes to this agenda, to the agenda are minor and Alexis is going to walk them through, walk you through, starting with the state recommendations and then go through the federal recommendations. You'll see a few adjustments, but for the most part, this should all look familiar to you. If I could, before we start, I was asked by President Sullivan to identify a song. As Alexis, if Alexis is doing the bulk of this presentation, I took the responsibility to find a song. And I'm putting it out there as a song many of you may not have heard and I encourage you to go listen to it because it's very sweet. "Cover Me in Sunshine" is the name of the song by Pink. And she sings it with her daughter. And they created this song, her nine-year-old daughter. And I have a nine-year-old daughter. And for anyone who knows me, you know, I always talk about my daughter. So they created the song during the pandemic. And just real quick, the chorus, because you haven't heard it, it's a beautiful song, says, it says, "Cover me in sunshine, shower me in the good times. Tell me that the world's been spinning since the beginning and everything will be all right." So that's sort of the spirit of the song, that we're going to come out of this and everything's going to be fine, the world will continue. So with that, appreciate the opportunity and I look forward to your questions and I'll hand it over to Alexis.
Thank you, Darcy.
Thanks, Darcy. And President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, CEC and guests. There are several of you I have gotten to know very well and there are some I have not met, but it is such an honor to be in front of you. I think the last two years I was with Maricopa. I had just started my first year and then last year I actually had just had a baby. So I have not had the privilege of presenting our legislative recommendations in my last two years at Maricopa, so I'm excited to be here. But Alexis Sustor, I'm our Government Relations Director and just here to present some recommendations. Elsa, you can go to the next slide. So just wanted to highlight, Darcy touched on a few, but you know, the last couple of years, the community colleges have seen a tremendous amount of success at our state legislature. And a couple noteworthy ones that are really reflective of items on the board's last year's agenda that were achieved was the permanent restoration of our STEM formula funding, which supports workforce development at our colleges. Some supplemental funding to support community college adult education programs. This was also an item on the board's agenda last year. And there was a one-year expenditure limitation reprieve. While we are still seeking, and you'll see it reflect on this agenda, a long-term solution to this issue. The one-year reprieve was a big one for the community colleges in Maricopa. And then lastly, there was a large package to invest in nursing and behavioral health workforce at community colleges, a critical workforce. And this, this big package was something celebrated and something that we were excited about. Next slide, Elsa. So just quickly, I want to jump in in the timeline and process to developing this, these recommendations in front of you today for your consideration. As Dr. Gonzalez mentioned, we have spent the summer convening an internal committee. It was really interesting because this, this work has to start this summer and our legislature had another historically long session that ended on June 25th. So we were sort of doing this work in conjunction of, you know, them closing their session and anticipation of where they'd land by the end of their session. So internal committee convened in June and July. This committee consisted of college leadership, district leadership, faculty and staff within the colleges to really develop the recommendations that are in front of you today. This was also vetted by CEC, our board presidents, as well as our board's Public Affairs Committee to just, to get their feedback on this initial set of recommendations before we came to you today. We're here today in September for the work session. I'm assuming all goes well, we'll work in any feedback today and hope to get the board's votes at the meeting later this September. And then really October is when we start advocating for this agenda, having targeted meetings with legislators based on what we adopt today. Next slide. So agenda goals, similar as last year that you'll see. We're really looking for general positions to allow us to be responsive. Things move pretty quickly at the legislature, as I'm sure you all are aware. So these are kind of overarching items that are, will allow us to be really responsive, to react as quickly as things are placed on the agenda and move through the legislative process. We also will continue, as we did last session, bi-weekly meetings with our board's Public Affairs Committee to assure they are in alignment with the positions that we're recommending, as well as just strategy and ensuring we're keeping the board apprised of what's going on at the fast-paced legislature. Also, just constant communication with our board. As you all are aware, we do include during session within your weekly staff shot, an attachment, which really provides an overview of what happened in that week and then an update on legislation that we're tracking. So just continue that work with the board, enhance president engagement. This was something we were excited about last year. We had several opportunities for presidents to engage more with legislators and we're going to just continue to step that up. We really saw legislators connect and really feel that connection with the workforce development happening in their communities, their community college. So we, you know, continue to focus on engagement of our college presidents and also just continue this positive momentum. We've seen a lot of successes at the state level, we've had a lot of successes at the federal level. So really hope that we can continue this positive momentum. Community colleges really are seen as an important workforce and economic driver in our county and our state. And, you know, we're really hoping to continue that great momentum. Next slide, Elsa. So I'm going to try to briefly, given how many there are, whiz through these. A lot of these are very similar agenda items as last year. These are kind of overarching goals and recommendations for you all to consider. This first one is just expanding or continuing to focus on the developments of our education workforce. If you all remember, we are recipients of the Arizona Teachers Academy, which is a state program. Rio Salado and Scottsdale College are participants of that. So really just continuing this legislative interest in being able to be responsive when legislation comes forward to grow the education workforce for us to be able to provide support within those areas. Next slide, Elsa. Next one, there is a tremendous amount of interest for early college. This is, you know, twofold. There's a tremendous interest in early college dual enrollment programs as a way to really show, enhance college attendance as well as college completion. There's a lot of data to support this. Our legislators are incredibly supportive of enrollment and would really like to see the growth. We've recognized the big barriers, our financial barriers to students, as well as having enough dual enrollment instructors to be able to teach. I'm sure Dr. Norini, who is very, very closely tied to this work, could speak to that. But, you know, we really would like to be able to be responsive to the legislature. We anticipate potentially there being some policy and budgetary investments in dual enrollment next year and would like to be able to support those. Next slide, Elsa. This recommendation is just maintaining, as mentioned, our STEM formula funding was restored. So just maintaining that permanent restoration, as well as supporting conversations around interest to store operational funding, which Maricopa has been cut out of that formula for several years now. And then just keeping an eye, there's always an interest in workforce development, either targeted programs, like I mentioned, in the healthcare workforce, as well as there's a tremendous amount of interest in manufacturing. So just, you know, keeping apprised of what legislative interests are, seeing what investments they'd like to make in workforce development and being responsive and being able to support items that really promote workforce development. Next slide, Elsa. This next one is kind of an overarching student support aid. You know, we've heard it loud and clear that tuition and fees is just one piece of a student's success in higher education to be able to complete a program. So, you know, this is, is recognized that there, there needs to be additional wraparound supports, anything from an affordable housing to childcare to textbooks, all of these barriers that get in the way of a student completing a community college workforce program. So really being responsive, being able to identify these opportunities to bolster the services to our students to really, you know, get them through a program, get them completed and get them in the workforce. And that's been, been of interest of our legislature to really, they kind of consider it student success aid and being able to be responsive to when these opportunities and interests come up with the legislature to be able to support those. Next slide, Elsa. Next one, there is a tremendous amount of interest in our short-term programs. You all have probably heard and celebrated a lot of these short-term programs. One specific one that's gotten a lot of attention is our semiconductor technician quick start, Mesa, Chandler Gilbert and Australia Mountain. The legislature is very enthused about our innovation in quick start programs and really just wanting to be responsive when these opportunities come forward, to be able to support these efforts that really bolster short-term workforce programs that get students through a program quickly and into the workforce. Next slide, Elsa. Next one is, you know, honing in a little bit more on the scholarship piece, but also recognizing that FAFSA completion is a really researched and data-driven way to get more students into college and really supporting some of these underserved populations. There is interest to bolster and advocate for more FAFSA completion as a way to enhance enrollments and really retention within colleges. So just wanting to be able to support legislative interest within this space and other just scholarships that really support students, anywhere from a traditional scholarship through associate to scholarships through fast track as well as dual enrollment programs. Next slide, Elsa. Next one is just kind of keeping an eye on a couple of funding sources that support workforce development at community colleges. Big one, Proposition 207, this is the marijuana tax. Although this is voter-protected, there is the ability with a two-thirds vote at the legislature to further the intent. So just want to be able to be responsive and keep an eye on any interest to further the intent within this act, as well as Proposition 301, which is the state sales tax that supports workforce development and STEM at community colleges. This is now voter-protected, so just being, keeping an eye on this. It is legislatively enacted, so there is always an interest to potentially take a look at that revenue source and take a look at that and revising the current formula structure. So just wanting to keep an eye on these two items that are important sources of revenue for colleges to promote STEM and workforce development. Next slide, please. Next recommendation, this is actually a new one, but there has been a tremendous, so I'll point that out because the others remained intact, but this is our last one. And there's been a tremendous amount of interest at our capital to support small business. Because small businesses in Maricopa and across our state are really the backbone of our economy. And Maricopa has a very innovative program called our Small Business Development Center, which some of you may know about, but there is just an interest. Actually, some of our legislators, I've heard, have taken advantage of this program that offers really small business coaching to help them launch, help them grow and help them sustain. And so I think there is genuine legislative interest to support small business development. And so this is just a recommendation to be able to support initiatives that are really to promote small business development in Arizona. Next slide, Elsa. And next one is just preserving our baccalaureate degree authority. As you know, two years ago, we, we gained the authority, the legislative authority to offer four-year baccalaureate degrees. So just monitoring this and preserving this, as well as seeing opportunities to, to reduce the barriers within these programs. The legislation does have quite a bit of prescriptive language in it, you know, really to minimize duplication of programs. As we get these programs excited and up and running and follow 2023, really assessing, you know, what worked, what didn't work, what might need to be revised in that legislation. And so just being responsive to if something were to come up in this space, being able to act in the best interest of our colleges. Next slide, Elsa. And this one is really just to maintain local control and local governance authority of the colleges, really protecting the governing board. And, you know, the legislature, while, you know, some of our, our work is constitutionally protected, there are pieces outside of the constitution sitting within Title 15 that the legislature does have authority. So just being responsive to when these actions potentially happen and, and really maintain the local control and local governance of our elected governing board, as well as, you know, ensuring faculty and staff are protected along the way. And also just, just minimizing, it's, it's a term used widely at the Capitol, but unfunded mandates, mandates that come in front of us that, you know, are unnecessary, unfunded and create additional bureaucratic and administrative processes. So this is just being able to be responsive when these items come up. Next slide, Elsa. And this is really kind of more on the, the policy space, being able to be responsive and develop innovative pathways to promote college enrollment. You know, honing in a little bit more on the dual enrollment, as well as other programs like co-enrollment, being able to look at prior learning assessment as a way to enhance enrollment. You know, we know there is an enrollment gap within community colleges right now. So being able to take a look at the policies, take a look at legislation in front of us and ensuring that it is beneficial and really going to promote enrollment into higher education enrollment into community colleges. Next slide, Elsa. And as I mentioned, one of the big wins was new investments in our community college adult education programs. So really just maintaining these new investments that really supplement and augment community college adult education programs, as well as maintaining these programs. Community colleges are the largest deliverers of high school equivalency programs within our state. Maricopa's Rio Salado College is the largest. So really just maintaining the infrastructure and continuing to build the already existence infrastructure that's working within the adult education space. Next slide, Elsa. And expenditure limitation, this is probably one that you all are all, all too familiar with, as am I. But I mentioned, one win was a one-year reprieve of the expenditure limitation formula, but we are continuing to seek a long-term solution to this formula, really to look to modernize the 42-year-old formula that hinders our ability to deliver workforce development programs. So really just looking to be responsive when we know that there is interest and we know there's efforts to modernize the community college expenditure limitation formula. So just asking for the ability to be responsive when these, these, this piece of legislation comes up next year. Next slide, Elsa. I think that's it in the state. I can pause and answer any questions on the states right now. Or President Sullivan, would you like me to keep going?
Now, I think this might be a good time to pause and, and go over, see if there's any inquiries from our board members on any of the items that you've presented. It's quite a bit on your plate. So let me start, if Ms. Bittersmith, are you still with us? And if you are, do you, do you have any questions? I know she had to leave for another commitment, so apparently she's had to check off. I'm sure that if she does, she'll circle back with you, Alexis. Mrs. McGrath, do you have any questions?
I just have a comment.
Sure.
Noted that the presentation of what's going to be talked about as far as policy and enacted is presented to very few people before it's put in place. And I would suggest that it is run by the entire board before it becomes our legislative agenda.
Mrs. McGrath, certainly it will be. It's something we vote on as a board. So this is the primary, your first presentation of what we may be interested in. And as this gets more solidified, based on our conversation today in this work session, Ms. Sue Stuff and her department or friends will present us with the legislative agenda to approve as a full board.
That was my problem. I think the board should have some input before there's a full agenda to present.
Yeah, so this is our opportunity today to offer some comment. And as it gets more developed, specifically, we'll have opportunity through our agenda and our votes to make comments on that as a full board. So you're absolutely right. And Alexis, I know that's how you plan to present this further, is that correct?
Correct. I got my pen, pen ready for any feedback we can work in.
Okay, thank you. So Mrs. McGrath, do you have any comment in any of the state items that have been talked about?
Not today, no, since they were brand new to me today, no.
Okay, so we'll have another opportunity when that gets more identified to offer comment. And so thank you with that inquiry. Any other comments? From you?
Oh, thank you, no.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Norini?
Yeah, no real questions, just comments. Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate the, the depth of, of the proposal, you know, especially when we're considering the, the whole, the whole student, the whole wraparound services and understanding that our financial aid isn't covering what our students need to pay, especially with inflation and all that's going on. And then with that early college and programs. And I appreciate looking at just, not just the students, but also the, the faculty that we need to, to get there. So, no, I really appreciate the depth of, of the proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms., Dr. Thor?
Thank you. I don't have any comments on the particular items and it is very similar to what we adopted last year, just largely brought up today. But I did have a question. This is probably the third or fourth year that we've had a legislative agenda. And I'm interested, Alexis and perhaps Darcy, has having a legislative agenda made it, made your job easier, knowing what the board supports and prioritizes? Or has it limited you should an issue come up that is not on our adopted agenda?
Dr. Thor, this is, this is Ms. Renfro. And I would answer that by saying it has been very helpful in terms of guiding us. There are going to be, because I was here for one or two sessions without a legislative agenda and now have been through, this will be the third one we adopted. I think it makes it very, very easy. And it helps, also helps us articulate and get our, our interests into other people's agendas. And so without an agenda that our board has adopted, it's really hard for us to do that. So I think it's worked very well personally. And, and we talk through those stickier situations that don't fit neatly in any of these 20, 21 categories or 22 categories we, we talk through. But I think it's been super helpful.
Very good. That's good to know. I have no other questions. Thank you, Dr. Thor. Ms. Nguyen?
Thank you for the presentation. I just, the last slide says federal policy and budgetary agenda, but it should probably say federal and state policy, correct?
I believe if, if I can answer that, we're going to go through the federal ones next. Where we just want the state ones.
I just wanted to let you know, pay attention. But then the other, there was a slide, I think it may have been slide 14. Maybe you can go back. And I could be wrong. Yes, that's the one. What happens when we have, it says, protect and expand local district authority and governance and the administration of the colleges, including the ability to pursue revenue generating strategies and policy that supports and protects students, staff, faculty, both academically and professionally? I just want to, that sounds great. Can you kind of give me an example of what you're referring to there? Like what, what would fit into that? What, what would be an example of, of that?
Sorry, so would you like me to take that one?
Yeah, go ahead, Alexis.
Okay, yeah, President Sullivan, Mrs. Nguyen. You know, really within the, the revenue generating strategies, I think that's work that's happening right now. But the, the faculty academically and professionally, anything from, there's been a variety of interest around Arizona State Retirement System. I think just keeping an eye on that and ensuring any changes to that are, are not going to impact our staff, to really the, the important curriculum development work that happens within our colleges, within our faculty. So I, I think that's kind of an overarching to be able to, to be responsive to if there was a change kind of operationally to ASRS that could negatively impact us to be able to speak out on behalf of the system and employees, all the way to ensuring curriculum development maintains, you know, the integrity of that maintains at the colleges and approved by our local governing board. So kind of two examples there, does that, those are, those are two that come to my mind of.
And I appreciate, I appreciate that because that to me would be something that would support the faculty and professionally. I think the line that's to go, and policy that supports and protects our students. Hopefully, that's our number one strategy that we're trying, because that's our mission, is to support and protect our students. And so, and I just wondered if there was conflicting agendas in this because if we're pursuing revenue generating strategies, sometimes that may not support our students, to Dr. Norini's point about the cost of education, especially with inflation right now. And then the faculty protecting them. with inflation right now. And then the faculty protecting them, I don't like to think of situations where the faculty would be adverse to students, but I, I was concerned about maybe too much fruit in the fruit salad here, that, that we didn't break these out individually as to a strategy for each group. There may be a time when there would be conflicting strategies in the way that this is worded. I'm not saying that that's your intention, but when, when you read this, that's what occurred for me. So I would ask for more clarification as to what it means to protect and expand our local district authority and governance in the administration of our colleges. And then what separately would be our revenue generating strategies. Again, separately, policy that supports and protects our students. And because you got this under as one recommendation, I think quite frankly, it could be four. And then faculty, both academically and professionally. Obviously, we want to retain the best professors that we can are protected in the way in which you, you demonstrated in your answer. And I appreciate that. The other question I have is obviously, we have an election on November 8th, so we don't even know who some of the players are. And I think we're supposed to vote on this agenda prior to that. Is there a way to, although we won't adapt protected, is there a way, because I thought we were voting on this next week or in two weeks. Am I incorrect on that?
President Sullivan, Mrs. Winn, yeah, the, the goal is to have this adopted in September, and we had this, this exact conversation with there being an upcoming election. I think that, and Mrs. Sullivan, you might be able to comment more, but I think the plan was to have something adopted, you know, allow us to be able to start working some of these items, and then bring something forward with the new board members in January, just see if there needs to be anything changed, anything revised based on the new makeup of the board. Mrs. Sullivan, is that, that sort of, I know we had this high-level conversation, is that how you envision as well?
To, to your point and to your question, Ms. Winn, there's long been discussion from all of us as the current board, that the legislative agenda was always developed too late, regardless of who was sitting in the legislature. So that when people are seated, we have an idea of where we want to be, what stands we might take in alignment with others, et cetera. So we're keeping with that timeframe. The election of people to the legislature at this point should not affect our own interests and agenda framework. As bills are introduced, certainly, we would have an expectation that Mrs. Kind, and Ms. Renfro would bring forward more specific, excuse my tongue tying, specificity to these issues that would be identified as legislative, specific bills, et cetera. So this gets further and further honed. These are our frameworks, more than specific responses to legislation outside of some things tied to, for example, Proposition 3001, management, et cetera, which are general, and then the context of expenditure limits, which repeatedly we keep moving forward on our legislative agenda. I don't see a shift there. So I guess that's a.
And there's no objection, just so you know, on my, yeah, there's no objection on my part of what's been presented, except in that, just for more clarity, because the devil's always in the details. And, and so just wanting to Mrs. McGrath's point, just wanting to know specifically what agenda we're adopting. And I just felt this was kind of vague, in not the whole thing, but just the, the thing that I pointed out. And I, I also, as someone who's leaving the board at the end of the year, I'm now setting an agenda for some, a new board, there'll be new board members come November, so maybe to leave some flexibility in case you, you know, the, the taxpayer elects people that don't necessarily agree with this agenda. I think it's, it's, it's a, it's unfortunately a transition year in terms of new legislators and new board members. And so maybe to leave some flexibility for our lobbyists to, if there's anything that we have over, haven't seen, or that as a result of the election and propositions that get passed, or new legislators that we can adapt. And I think we do that anyway, but just, just as a, just as a, to say it out loud, that we should be a little bit flexible in our agenda as we go into next year. I think I agree with Dr. Thor that we are continuing an agenda that we started a year or two years ago and have been successful in. So I, those are just the points I would like to make. And I appreciate the presentation from Alexis. And Darcy, sorry, Mrs. Renfro, it went completely out of my head. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Winn. And as always, there's opportunities for us to make changes. And I think at this point, what we will be looking at is, again, the framework with some direction. And as there's more delineation over who's serving the legislature, what bills are being created, as both Darcy and your team and Alexis have done in the past, that will all be honed. There will be opportunities for a new board to offer comment and impose or impact decisions that are being made now. But this sets the course, and I think we have a responsibility to do that. Appreciate your comments and questions. And if there are no further questions around anything specific that was presented here as a topic or an item, I think we can move to the federal policy and budgetary agenda. Board members, any last comment on the state piece before we move forward? Being done, please continue, Alexis.
Yes, I'm just jumping into the federal side of things. Again, a lot of this has, is going to look very familiar from last year's agenda with, with some, some changes I'll point out right now. First federal recommendation, last year, this really was more so focused on supporting opportunities to support pandemic recovery. Really, at this point, with the pandemic behind us, we're really just wanting to monitor opportunities and, and really monitor the needs of our students and the needs of our colleges. So, you know, as, as things continue to, to bubble up at the federal level, based on the needs of our students, really hoping to be responsive and, and provide feedback as needed. Next slide, Elsa. And this is a similar one from last year as well. There is a tremendous amount of interest at the federal level to bolster workforce development. And there's a couple of, of key programs that support our students and our colleges within this effort, anything from CTE to the We Oa Dollars, to the Adult Basic Education Dollars. These are all critical streams that support our students as well as our colleges. So just being responsive to, to the interest at the federal level to support, you know, a variety of workforce development programs. Next slide, Elsa. And next one is to, there is a tremendous amount of interest at the federal level to, to, to make some changes positively to Pell Grants, to really have a more streamlined process for students, as well as minimizing some of the operational inefficiencies. There has been several attempts, but not successful, to enhance Pell for short-term programs, as well as developing better policies and within Pell to better support our students. It's, it's quite a burdensome process. So really being able to be a part of those conversations at the best interest of our students and, and being able to comment on some of those Pell revisions is, is what we're asking for next ones. Elsa. And you, there's a, within Pell as well, there is a, just a tremendous, tremendous amount of interest within enhancing the work of community colleges, being able to better support students. We know there's a lot of dialogue on the tuition program for community college students, and also college saving programs like Earn to Learn. So really, we're just looking for the ability to be able to participate in these conversations around a variety of, of tuition policies that are being created at the federal level, and really to, to comment, to ensure that they are our programs that are going to be beneficial to our students and flexible to be able to recognize that we have 10 individual colleges that would be implementing these policies. Next slide. Nine out of 10 of our community colleges are Hispanic-serving institutions. There is always legislation and always funding to enhance services and supports for HSI. So hoping to be able to continue to, to participate in these conversations, recognizing that of a lot, nine out of 10 of our colleges are HSI's and benefit from these programs at the federal level. Next slide, Elsa. And this funding is, or this request is being responsive to submit for congressionally-directed spending requests. Some of you may be aware that we recently celebrated with Congressman Stanton the security of $1 million for a bioscience program. This was utilizing CDS funding. So just looking for authority to develop new CDS proposals to support workforce developments and submit those to our delegation next year. Next slide, Elsa. And see, next one is, is kind of that holistic conversation that Dr. Norene had just had, but recognizing that tuition and fees is just one piece of the pie to support our students. And there is a lot of recognition at the federal level that our students need a variety of supports to enhance their enrollment and retention and completion of programs. So being able to comment on those programs out of the best interest of our students. Next slide, Elsa. And this is somewhat similar to that, that item on the state agenda, but really recognizing that federal policy is, is, can impact community colleges. And there are so many different systems, different students within systems, they operate differently. So just recognizing that federal policies that comes down, we need to try to maximize local control to ensure that they work for our students and work for our institutions. So being able to participate in conversations on a variety of, of anything from legislation to rulemaking, to ensure that there's something that really will work and maintain as much local control and local governance of those programs, so our, our governing board can really make the decisions to, to ensure the program works for our students and colleges. Next slide, Elsa. This is our last one, another item from last year, but just looking to support legislation that would support our DACA students at the federal level. And another item that, that is duplicate of last year's legislative item, looking for authority to just continue to participate in these conversations at the federal level. Next slide, Elsa. Nope, I think that's it. So that is the federal agenda, and I can kind of pause here and answer any questions.
Thank you, Alexis. We'll do the same thing, only again, maybe I'll go backwards this time. Kathleen, do you have any comments or questions on this? Okay, I'm assuming the answer then is no. Dr. Thor, do you have any comments or questions on this?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Norene?
Yeah, just a quick one. With, with the Pell priority, is that going to include the second chance Pell as well?
Dr. Norene, this is Alexis. Second chance Pell, you're talking for our incarcerated students? Is that what you're referring to? So that is happening. We've been actually participating in the, the regulatory conversations of that. So, yeah, the, the intent of that one is really to participate now that that second chance Pell has passed. Now they're kind of in the rulemaking process, and we've been working, Real Salado College is our primary provider in that. So we've been really participating in the rulemaking dialogue with USDOE. So long way of saying yes to your question.
Good, good. And, and then just with, with the Pell Grant as well, and, and just, I, I think as long as, I mean, I'm sure this is what we're, we're talking about altogether. Pell is one part of the financial aid, as long as we keep advocating for, for the other types of financial aid to help the students too, whether it's the, the loans or the SEOG, or some of those other programs at, at the federal level that we need to, you know, keep pushing to, to support our students. But yeah, but other than that, that's, I appreciate, I appreciate the move, and I appreciate the, the focus on the, on the DACA students. With the DACA students, we just need to keep in mind that, just with our, our language, just the, with DACA, the way it is now, that it's just, you know, and students' abilities to apply for it, just making sure that we just incorporate all the Dream Act-type students that we're looking at, not just the ones who have applied and have received DACA.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. Mrs. McGrath, do you have any comments on this?
Yes, I'm a little bit bothered that we are advocating a position that has been declared unconstitutional, the DACA students. I worry about what our congressional delegation thinks we're made of, a bunch of people that don't understand Supreme Court decisions or what. But it bothers me that we keep pushing on this, and I don't see any end in sight or any victory there. And it's entirely up to the courts and not up to us. And I really don't like the idea that we keep pushing for unconstitutional outcomes.
Duly noted. Any comment, further comment on, on anything else in addition to that? Go ahead. Anyone, does anyone else have, a board member have a comment?
I didn't have any questions. I apologize. I had to go sing happy birthday to my grandson. And I apologize if I wasn't there when you came.
Let me make sure Mrs. McGrath has no other comment than.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mrs. McGrath, do you have any other comment, or was that your, your statement or comment?
That was it. Thank you for asking.
Sure. Okay, Ms. Winn?
I don't have any questions. I, I, I think that we have to follow the law. And I, I, I want to help the DACA students, but I don't think we can, we can go against what's currently in statute. So we have to be careful that we don't violate any law when we're, we're doing what we're doing. And look for other means to support those students the best that we can. I, I want to encourage everybody that wants an education to get an education, but I, I do concur with Mrs. McGrath's opinion. Thanks.
Sure. So with the comments that you've received, Alexis and Darcy, I guess I should be using your last names, I'm sorry. Ms. Husken and Ms. Renfro, can you, I mean, do you have a sense of where you want to go with further explanation to our next meeting, where you will put some framework around this? Any tweaks you feel you need to make based on comments?
President Sullivan, members of the board, this is Ms. Renfro. I, I think we can break up the, the recommendation per Miss Winn's comments. That, that, that would, it is very long, a long recommendation. Maybe we can break that up and make that a little clearer, because I think you're right, there are several things that could happen under each one of these. So that's what I heard. With regard to other concerns, I think we will continue to bring to this board activities of the legislature every week, as we report them in the snapshot during session, and every board meeting as requested, and continue to refine positions as bills do present themselves and other opportunities present themselves.
That's perfect. Thank you. And so what we'll see for our meeting, next meeting, is some tweaking on this? Is that what I'm hearing? And then we can, understanding the process and, and the way we'll move forward can address some of the concerns that were also raised this evening?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate the presentation this evening. Board members, I'm going to ask you one more time if there's any further question before I turn this back over to Dr. Gonzalez. Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Being done, again, thank you, Ms. Husken and Ms. Renfro for your presentation, and look forward to our continued. forward to our continued work with you in this effort and hopefully we're at a game to be a little more proactive and still always reactive, which was a board's interest. Gosh, I remember a few years ago, we started on that trajectory, so that we're there now. With that, Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any summary comments or other, something else to offer to this?
Yes, President Sullivan, I just would like to thank the board for their questions and feedback. And the one question that, that remains in my mind that I think I could also respond to was Dr. Thor's question on whether our board taking time to adopt the legislative agenda is helpful. I would add that it's certainly helpful and I would also add that it adds strength to our conversations and requests that we make of our, of our state legislators, excuse me, state legislators, to be able to say that our governing board has taken an official stance or belief on something, I just think brings great value to that conversation. And it prevents any one of us from coming across as if it's our own personal wish and desire and whatever we're asking for. So I think that's where that strength comes from. So I, I'm glad that we're doing this and once again, taking this under consideration. Look forward to the board ultimately adopting a legislative agenda that we can begin to work. Thank you to Darcy and Alexis for your good work. And you know, this is all on the heels of what was another successful legislative session for Maricopa. So thank you all for your work and your contributions to that effort. It's, it's taken a village to make it happen. So thank you.
Those villages are great, aren't they? So thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. And without further comment, I'm going to conclude our work session for the evening, keeping in mind the lovely lyrics of the song that Ms. Renfro presented to us this evening. So again, thank you, and we will adjourn shortly, we will convene shortly our agenda review session. So thank you, everyone, for attending our work session and I'll be back to you in a couple of minutes. Thank you. Okay, everyone. Again, if you're just joining us, I want to announce that we are live captioning our meeting. Please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting space where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning access. So at this time, I call to order the agenda review meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of September 13, 2022. This evening, we will review the agenda for the September 27, 2022 board meeting. Again, for the record, I will call, roll call of board members. I understand Ms. Burnett, Mr. Burnett is not able to join us this evening. Ms. Bitter Smith, I know you had other commitments, but, and will be in and out of our meeting. Are you present? Mrs. McGrath?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norini? Thank you. Ms. Smith again is out of the country. Dr. Thor? Thank you. Ms. Nguyen? Thank you. With my presence, we have five board members, if I just counted this right, one, two, three, five board members present and two absent this meeting and our student trustee again unable to join us. So as we go through the agenda review for the September 27 meeting, please note that there is a rhythm to our meetings. We will have a work session beginning at 5:00 PM on the 27th to discuss again tuition overview for fiscal year 2324. Concluding that, at 6:30, we will move into our regular meeting with our normal activity. And by the way, I'm sorry I missed being in person with you at the last meeting. Thank you, Dr. Norini, for managing that meeting. And I'm excited, if all goes well, I'll, I'll be there at the regular meeting. We will be convening in the Rio Salado conference room as we did last time. So we go through all the items on our regular meeting agenda. It will take us to citizens interim and then consideration of the consent agenda. Board members, I will read each item and if you have comment or question, I will ask for that. Moving then to the consent agenda items. Item number two is approval of acceptance of a new grant award from the Arizona Commerce Authority to the Maricopa County Community College District for the Arizona Small Business Development Center in the amount of $335,000 for the period of July 1, 22 to June 30, 23. Board members, do you have any comments or questions on this? Moving on, item three, approval of acceptance of new grant award from the U.S. Small Business Admin to Maricopa County Community College District for the Arizona Small Business Development Center Arizona Network for the period from January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2023 in the amount of $2,608,277. Is there any comments or questions? Okay, moving on to item four, approval of the acceptance of a continuation grant from the U.S. Department of Education to Mesa Community College for year two of the HSI STEM Guided Pathways Enhancement project from October 1, 22 to September 30, 23 in the amount of $898,911. Any comments or questions? Number five, approval, yes, please, go ahead.
I actually, with your indulgence, would go back to item three. And I'm curious why this item is just now being brought to us if the grant award period is January 1, 2022 through the end of '23.
Thank you for your question and yes, I will indulge you in that inquiry. I do believe there are a few items on this agenda that also have dates that, to which you might have asked the same question. So with that, I'm going to turn this, the answering opportunity over to Dr. Gonzalez.
I needed to unmute myself. Thank you, President Sullivan and Dr. Thor. I'm going to ask Darcy to comment or Darcy and possibly Bettina to comment on this one. But in, in general, as Mrs. Sullivan indicated, you may notice that there are more than one in this, in this particular instance or this particular agenda where the, the date has passed. And so in some of these instances, we are recognizing patterns as we work with some of our partners in these partnerships, specifically if there's an IGA, for an example, with the school district, that their timeline may not necessarily align with ours and we're dependent upon them to be on our timeline to, to get these passed in a, in a, in a manner that, that is, you know, critical to the deadlines here. And so with that, we're, we're going to assess where this happens with a level of frequency that we're just not happy with and we're going to be making some adjustments to the processes involved in that, which may ask that we ask our partners to, to adjust their own timelines and we're sure remaining hopeful that they will be able to accommodate that. In the instances when it comes up with, when we're dealing with dual enrollment agreements, for example, our partnering high schools also have a governing boards that they must go and present their IGA to and hopefully garner their approval. If that board decides, for example, to, to pull the item, it might extend it by a month or two so that they can continue to explore the language. And so in this particular instance, that may not be the case or it may be the case, but I'll ask Darcy or Bettina to comment. And we may even ask our new general counsel to offer comment since some of these are also dealing with contracts. And so I'll start with Darcy and Bettina since this is dealing with the Small Business Administration.
And Dr. Gonzalez, if I may, I would add an additional question here. And that is, have we been unable to spend any of the money under this grant award since it has not yet been accepted by the governing board?
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Thor.
Dr. Thor, President Sullivan and Chancellor Gonzalez, this is Darcy Renfro. On item number three, to your second question, no, we have not, we're not prevented from spending funds, even though the board had not accepted this. The reason, the, there are a couple reasons for this delay and honestly, just plain, it, part of this was just plain, it got through the cracks and I will admit that to this board on this particular instance. We got the SBA award notice in May, so they didn't send it to us, even though the program has started January till May. That said, we should have had this to you in June. So we will do better. We had significant carryforward and have had significant carryforward for the last couple program years with this fund source. So we didn't run into issues with funding, which is part of the reason why it didn't get caught sooner. That carryforward funding will not, will not continue under new leadership at AZ SBDC. We had a time period of almost a year where there was, there were, there was maybe one employee, maybe two employees at the state office. So there was underspending happening at the state office as well as across in the other school districts because we had some leadership challenges. So I don't anticipate us being in that position again. But the, it was part SBA delay, but, but honestly, this should have gotten to you sooner.
Sullivan, Dr. Thor, this is Bettina Sullis. On the particular grant items in a similar situation, in particular items number four, five and six, so in those cases, we only received notification from the Department of Education on the 29th of August. And so some of this is just as Dr. Gonzalez indicated, timing issues related to the board submission dates for board items and the receipt of the actual documentation that we submit to the board to get items on for agenda review. And so we will be looking at opportunities to enhance this to ensure that those, the board items come forward with plenty of time for any questions and feedback prior to the actual approval dates.
And this is Janice Falkenberg. Good afternoon, everyone. I'll just comment and I'll piggyback on what others have said. There are a couple of intergovernmental agreements on this agenda that are also retroactive and I'll be working closely with the provost and to see how we can improve our processes internally so that we can work with our high school partners to ensure we're aligned with our timing to get these to you all.
Is it just my computer that's losing?
No, I don't think so, President Sullivan. Janice, you were cutting in and out for us while you were offering an explanation.
I'll try that again. Is that better?
So far, so good.
Okay, thank you. So thank you, President Sullivan. I'm sorry about the technical difficulties. I just wanted to also piggyback on what the others have said and I'm speaking to the intergovernmental agreements that are on this agenda that are also retroactively dated and that I'll be working with the provost's office to see how we can better align with our high school partners on ensuring that these get to the board on a more timely basis so that they're aligned with the terms of the contracts.
Thank you. Dr. Thor, do you have any follow-up question or comment before I turn it back to Dr. Gonzalez?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Again, thank you, Dr. Thor, for your question. And I guess to summarize what you're, you're seeing here in this particular evening, it's, it's, some of it's case by case and some of it's instances where we certainly have an opportunity to improve our own internal processes. Some of it has to do with some leadership change and simply falling through the crack and it's certainly not our intention and your ability to weigh in on these before we are, you know, moving along with some of these grants or intergovernmental agreements. And we aim to, we aim to do better and avoid this in the future. So we appreciate your patience and understanding through this.
Thank you for that. I mean, certainly seeking solutions so that it doesn't become a common practice is of interest to all of us as board members. So as the solution and the accountability to the dates is forged, we'll be very interested in what that looks like so that we can see this more as anomalies rather than some consensus. So thank you all for addressing that concern. We made it through item four, so I'm going to move us to item five, approval of the acceptance of a continuation grant from the U.S. Department of Education to Mesa Community College for year three of the Title V program from 10/1, October 1, 22 to September 30, 23 in the amount of $600,000. Any comments or questions? Item six, approval of the acceptance of a continuation grant from the U.S. Department of Education to Mesa Community College for year three of Student Support Services from September 1, 2022 to August 31, 2023 in the amount of $261,888. Noting the date on that, are there any other comments or questions? Moving to item seven, approval of the acceptance of a continuation grant from the United States Department of Education to Mesa Community College for year three of Student Support Services STEM from September 1, 22 to August 31, 23 in the amount of $261,888. Any comments or questions? Item eight, approval of the acceptance of a continuation grant from the United States Department of Education to Gateway Community College for year three of Student Support Services from September 1, 2022 to August 31, 2023 in the amount of $273,957. Any comments or questions? Item nine, the acceptance of a continuation grant from the U.S. Department of Education to Gateway Community College for year four of the Title V program from October 1, 22 to September 30, 2023 in the amount of $595,094. Comments or questions? Being done, moving to item 10, approval of acceptance of a continuing grant award from the U.S. Department of Education to Glendale Community College for year two, funding for the STEM Progression Transformation and Innovation Program in the amount of $885,119 for the period from October 1, 22 through September 30, 2023. Any comments or questions? Being done, item 11, approval of acceptance of continuing grant award from the National Science Foundation to Phoenix College for year five of collaborative research. Let's see. Transfer to interdisciplinary natural sciences, the train program for the period from January 15, 2022 to December 31, 2022 in the amount of $214,956. Any comments or questions? Item 12, approval of acceptance of continuing grant award from the United States Department of Education to Phoenix College for the year three of the Title V program, closing achievement GROPS through holistic support, work-based experiences and equity-minded practices in the amount of $588,130 for funding period October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2023. Any comments or questions?
I have a quick comment if you, if I may.
You may.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a good shout out to all the people who have been working on these grants. If my math is right, it looks like we are approving almost $8 million worth of grants that, that throughout the district that everybody has worked so hard to get and maintain. So I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that they've done to get these grants and I'd also be interested in seeing what best practices we come out of some of these grants. A lot of them have to do with retention and, and success of the students. So I'd be interested to see some of the best practices that come out of it. But other than that, I just wanted to thank all the people that worked on the grants and are participating in the grants that make them successful for all the work that they've done.
Thank you, Dr. Norini. Good thing to acknowledge. All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'm going to move to a different element then. That's item 13, approval of a job order contracting purchase order to Pueblo Mechanical and Controls in the amount of $1,357,200. in the amount of $1,357,264 for the replacement of 10 air handling units in fitness and gymnasium buildings at Glendale Community College main campus. Any comments or questions on that? Item 14, approval to award a construction purchase order to Starkweather Roofing in the amount of $504,503, excuse me, for the Fitness Wellness Center Building Roof Restoration Project at Scottsdale Community College. Any comments or questions? Item 15, approval of district blackboard information technology help desk contract extension not to exceed $375,000 to include a one-time cost increase for student multi-factor authentication support required by new federal compliance standards. Any comments or questions? Item 16, approval of contract with Knowledge Services Temp Agency Network and expenditure up to $400,000 annually under State of Arizona contract, lots of numbers, uh, for inbound and outbound enrollment-focused supplemental contact center support services. Any comments or questions? Item 17, approval of project initiation for the Scottsdale Community College Library or handler replacement and remodel project. Any comments or questions? Item 18, approval of intergovernmental agreement between Glendale Community College and Glendale Union High School District for embedded advisors at, uh, Glendale United High School, beginning July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. Any comments or questions?
Mrs. Sullivan, Mrs. Win, do we know how many?
Uh, Dr. Gonzalez?
I'm sorry, President Sullivan, could you, I could not hear the question and my screen went blank there for a moment.
It was item 18, which is the approval of the IGA between Glendale Community College and Glendale Union High School District for embedded advisors. And Ms. Win's question was, I assume, intended to ask, uh, how many embedded advisors does this support?
Thank you.
Is that correct, Mrs. Win?
Correct. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
Sure.
President Sullivan, Mrs. Win, thank you for your question of if Dr. Labor Reese is, is on, she may be able to respond to this question. Otherwise, uh, perhaps Mrs. Sellest may have an answer to your question as well.
Good evening. This is Dr. Reese from Glendale Community College. Um, President Sullivan and Mrs. Win, thank you for the question. We are excited to start this program with Glendale Union High School District. We also have, uh, an MOU in the works for Peoria Unified. We have dedicated two full-time, um, advisors to be embedded advisors. The idea is that we will have one to start in each of the school districts. We do have those two advisors, uh, going through training right now. So until we have the Peoria Unified MOU, um, signed an agreement and approved, we will, they will be placed in Glendale Union High School District.
So if you get the MOU in Peoria, then you'll have one at each high school, correct?
Correct, to start. This is the beginning.
That's great. Thank you so much for answering that.
You're welcome.
Uh, thank you. Being no other comments or questions on item 18, I'll move us to item 19, approval of extension of IGA between Maricopa County Community College District and Phoenix Union High School District to support the implementation of trio upward bound grant programs at, uh, North High School, Camelback High School, Central High School, and academies at South Mountain from, uh, September 1st, 2022, to August 31st, 2027. Any comments or questions? Item 20, approval of amendment to current memorandum of understanding between the Maricopa County Community College District and the Maricopa Community College Foundation to provide for joint administration of a subrecipient grant of America Rescue Plan Act funds from the city of Phoenix to the foundation for the Phoenix Promise Program in the amount of $5 million for the period from the date of execution, sometime in fall 2022 through September 30th, 2025. I believe I, there's a board member who has a question on this. Is that you, Dr. Norene?
That's me. I, I think I've got some of the answers that I had, uh, that I, to the questions I had earlier today. Uh, but just quickly, it says we have, uh, to support 400 Phoenix residents who qualify for Arizona resident tuition. Are, are we talking full-time, part-time, or just 400 individuals?
Uh, Dr. Gonzalez?
Sure. President Sullivan, Dr. Norene, um, let me turn that over to either, uh, Ms. Sellest or Mr. Speaker to respond to your question. But I have an idea of what I think the answer is, but I don't want to be, give you the wrong information.
Thank you, Chancellor. Um, this is Brian Spicker, uh, governing board members, Dr. Norene. Uh, yes, it's 400, uh, students and they can be anywhere from six credit hours up to a maximum, I believe, of 16.
Oh, thank you. And, and is there, um, a semester limit on them, uh, that they have to be done in a certain time? Or, um, or they're just, as long as they're continuously enrolled, will, will, the program will support them?
Thank you for that, Dr. Norene. Um, the, the program is set up, the ARPA funding is through spring of 2025. And so the funding will follow the student as long as they're enrolled and continuing with the GPA that's, uh, required to, to do that. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, thanks. And, and is it for new students or are continuing students eligible for it?
Yeah, so the, the way it's, uh, fashioned is it, it's for new students. Um, and it, it's primarily targeting students who are graduating from high school uh, or have graduated from high school during COVID. So there's a, a, a 2020 gap, uh, built into the effort so that students who could not attend, uh, the community colleges during the COVID crisis would have access then to these resources for tuition and student supports.
Yeah, just reading over it, it looks like a great program. It looks like you had, uh, you know, a counselor or somebody help you, help develop it because, uh, even with just, that they don't have to apply for the, the Pell Grant per se, or they may not be eligible, there are ways for them to show you that, that they are still in need. So I, I really appreciate that part of the, of the grant. So thank you, uh, whoever wrote that in there.
But other than-
Dr. Norene, yeah, it, it was unique in the sense that it was not just for FAFSA. We have a lot of students, um, moving from high school who do not complete a FAFSA. And so the needs-based, uh, uh, does affect that. And I would give hats off to the strong collaboration between the district and the foundation in being able to fashion this effort. Thank you.
Yeah, because I know that working with students, there's all sorts of reasons why they can't. Uh, whether the parents, uh, lost the tax forms, they, yeah, all sorts of different reasons. So I, I really appreciate that, that that was included in, in alternative ways to, to prove their need. So thank you. Other than that, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, board members, anyone else have any comments or questions on that item? Uh, then being done, item 21, approval of the updated mission vision values and strategic plan for Phoenix College. Certainly keeping in mind that, uh, there may be some tweaking when we approve the, the district strategic plan. But with that, uh, any comments or questions on item 21? Being done, item 22, approval of Phoenix College Prep Academy's submission of annual financial report to the Arizona Department of Education for fiscal year 2122. Any comments or questions on that? Item 23, approval of Gateway Early College High School submission of annual financial report to the Arizona Department of Education for fiscal year 2122. Any comments or questions? Item 24, approval of state university license agreements for use of office space at colleges by Arizona's universities. Any comments or questions on that? Item 25, approval of approval of 2223 district property and casualty insurance program renewal for the period of October 1, 2022, to October 1, 2023. Any comments or questions? Last item on the consent agenda is, is of, uh, today, approval, uh, item 26, approval of proposed, proposed course fee changes for a spring semester fiscal year 2223. Uh, board members, any comments or questions?
Of course.
I was waiting for you to, instead of me just calling on you, uh, Dr. Norene, please, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I'll save my detailed questions for, for an email that I'll, I'll send out to. I, I do have a few detailed questions, but just some general questions. I just want to make sure I understand, uh, for equipment and, uh, uh, material that costs more than $5,000, we, we don't, we, we aren't allowed to charge students fees to support or maintain that equipment. Is that correct?
Dr. Gonzalez?
President Sullivan, Dr. Norene, Bettina?
Uh, Dr. Norene, uh, President Sullivan, for, there are specific course fee guidelines. And so for capital purchases of, and maintenance of equipment, a course fee is not allowable. There are, um, very specific categories of which we'd be happy to share with the board if they are interested in those.
Okay. Uh, but, but is there, is there an amount limit to, to what those are? Is it, is, is $5,000 the cutoff? Or you, or is that part of the whole package?
I can confirm the dollar amount and, uh, share that information back with, uh, you and the board, Dr. Norene.
Okay, I'll, I'll put that in my questions that I, that I send out. Uh, the other thing that I noticed in, in the fees, uh, that was, that was hopeful is that it looked like quite a few fees were, were shifting or we were charging fees uh, so that the students wouldn't have to pay for, for books. And it looked like it's going to save some, some money for, for the students. So I'm encouraged by that. But what I, I was concerned about is if and how that may affect our students' financial aid packages. Uh, because the way I understand it, right now, course fees aren't part of the, of the student budget when we're, when we're calculating financial aid. So by shifting, but books are. Uh, so I was wondering if by shifting our, our book cost to course fee cost, is that going to somehow impact our students' financial aid packages?
Uh, Dr. Norene, we can follow up directly with our financial aid office unless, uh, Dr. Keisha Brock would like to weigh in on that. I believe students receive book advances for the cost of textbooks. Um, and so that fee may be covered in that regard. Uh, Dr. Brock, would you like to weigh in? Otherwise, we can follow up directly. We will follow up with you, Dr. Norene, and the rest of the board members.
Okay, thank you. And the, the final thing is, uh, in final class, where students go to, to look for courses that are available so they can register for classes, uh, I would just like to, to put out there that when we, when we're charging a, a fee right now, the students have to, won't know that there's a fee to the class unless they click the little hyperlink for notes. And then it, it'll drop down and tell you if there's a, a fee for the class or not. And then there's another hyperlink that they can click on to tell them what, what the books cost. So I, I would just like to throw out there that if we can make that more apparent to the students so that they know that this class has a, has a fee, uh, and, and the cost of the books, I, I think that would be very helpful to, to the students so that they know what they're getting themselves into when they're signing up for, for classes. Uh, but all the other questions I have, I'll, I'll forward those to a, to an email so we can get those detailed answers. Thanks.
Uh, thank you. Uh, and as a reminder, Dr. Norene, as you send your questions, uh, certainly you can CC us on your questions. Uh, for those that respond, uh, Ms. Sellest and others, the answer would go also directly to all board members. But we as board members can't engage around any of that conversation. Uh, but we would appreciate the answer to all the questions, all of us as board members. So thank you for that. Um, are there any other comments or questions in general to the consent agenda? Okay, being done, uh, the meeting then on the 27th will move into, uh, a motion for approval on the 2023 state legislative agenda and 23 federal policy and budgetary agenda, acknowledging that there will be tweaks that we will see ahead of time from, uh, Ms. Renfro on the material that was presented this evening. There'll be further opportunity, Mrs. McGrath, for you to offer comment on that at that time with, uh, the intention that all board members are participating in that, both discussion and, uh, review of the motion. We also note that there's a placeholder under non-consent action items for, uh, discussion or approval of a memorandum of, of understanding for the 2122 faculty agreement. Uh, Dr. Gonzalez, is there a little bit more information of what that means, given that it's 2122 fact? Am I missing something?
Um, President Sullivan, members of the board, now I don't believe that you're missing anything there. Again, here I would ask, um, Mrs. Sellest to offer some comment on, and perhaps respond to your question.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, uh, so President Sullivan, members of the board, uh, Dr. Gonzalez, the memorandum, memorandum of understanding actually, uh, placeholder should be for 2223, so that is an error. And the memorandum of understanding process, just for clarity for, uh, members of the board, is our, um, language that is present within the approved faculty agreement that allows for, um, memorandums of understanding to be entered into, uh, between the faculty and the chancellor to support, uh, particular aspects of the faculty agreement that may require additional adjustments. And so those details will be brought forward to the board. Uh, this is part of the language that you've approved in the faculty agreement that allows for the memorandum of understanding. And, uh, we anticipate that these would come once a semester, if at all. Uh, they have a short duration and so that those details will be present in the actual board item that we hope to get to you, uh, before the close of this week.
Okay, thank you for clarification on that. Uh, board members, any comments or questions on, uh, the items that will come for us for non-consent action? Being done then, um, on the agenda, we would move into first read and information on the employment and separation report for July 9, 22, through August 19, 22. There aren't any other items in there. Then we would move to monitoring part, uh, tied to the budget analysis, uh, report fund one. And there is no other comments under monitoring reports. And the last on the agenda would be governing board reports, uh, from board members, current events summaries. Acknowledging then that, uh, we would move into October, gosh, so fast. October 11th, we will have a virtual agenda review and, uh, possibly, and we will have an executive session following that agenda review regarding a litigation update presented by our general counsel, Ms. Falkenberg. We will then convene a board meeting on the 25th of October with a possible work session beginning at 5:30 or 5 o'clock or 5:30 and moving into our regular board meeting at 6:30. Once again, as it will be in September and October, we will also be meeting in the Rio Salado Conference Center. So that is what our agenda for the 27th meeting looks like. And, uh, are there any closing questions or comments from the board on, uh, tonight's review? Being done, I am going to adjourn the agenda review meeting. Want to thank all the presenters, board members for your attendance and all of those of you listening this evening. So thank you for that and may you have a good week. Talk to you soon. Thank you. Good night.